Thank you, sir. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners for October 1st, 2019. Invite you to stand if you like, and I'll offer an invitation, invocation, and then followed by the pledge of allegiance. Father, we thank you for another great day in our community, and we praise you for all that you've done for us. Thank you for this group of people who consider the issues that are brought for us tonight, and we pray that your guidance is we make decisions that are pleasing in your sight. Thank you, Lord, for all that you do. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call the roll.
Commissioner Nash. Commissioner Paragon.
Here.
Commissioner Beasley Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Denning.
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson.
Here. Do we have any awards or recognitions this evening?
I do not, Mayor.
All right. Do you have some comments for us?
Yes, I need to request that we withdraw item number one from the agenda. That person has withdrawn their interest in that position for us, and we're going to have to seek another candidate. So withdrawal number one. Second item is that there is a need for closed session. Ashley will read the reason.
Pursuant to KRS 61811F for discussions which might lead to the discipline or dismissal of an individual employee without restricting that employee's right to a public hearing if requested. This exception shall not be interpreted to permit discussions of general personnel matters in secret.
Moved.
Second.
And Nash, second. By Paragon, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Nash.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Anything else, sir?
No, sir.
Of the minutes from our special work session, the fall retreat on September 2016-2019, and our regular meeting on September 17th, 2019. Motion by Paragon, second by Beasley Brown. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Please call the roll.
Nash.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
First item is municipal order 2019-166.
Municipal order approving the probationary appointments of Matthew Barrow, Martell Dunn, and Christopher House to the position of Labor Two in the Public Works Department.
Moved.
Second.
Nash, second. By Paragon, Mr. Mizel.
We've had some resignations to occur in our operations division, and we had three openings for Labor Two. We went out for a search. And Erin Holsey, our HR director, is here tonight to present to you three candidates for hire.
So we did have a couple of openings this summer. This is the second round of bringing some candidates forward. We hired two a few weeks ago. So we decided to repost the position and get a new pool of candidates. We ended up getting 40 applications, which was really great. We decided to interview eight, and we selected three. Matthew Barrow, if you could please stand. Martell Dunn and Christopher House. Their applications and a brief description about their background is provided to you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Any comments or questions? I know you do, Joe. Go ahead.
Thank you, Your Honor. I appreciate you always giving me the opportunity to have a part in checking the background of future employees of the city. And tonight, certainly, these employees fit into that category. Who do I need to talk to first? Erin Holsey, I guess, since she is the top dog in this department.
It's going to be a while, guys. Young, go ahead and sit down if you want to.
As you know, Erin, I like to always talk with you and the members of your department about employees if I have the opportunity and the law allows. In this case, the law allows. This young man, Mr. Dunn, Martell Dunn, did you really, really check his background?
I want you to look at the look on his face.
And Ms. Laura, she's about to come over here, Joe.
Is he sweating?
He looks like he's sweating to me. Poor man.
Yes, ma'am.
I assure you that we did a great job selecting candidates for this position.
Thank you, Erin. I know you're always truthful with me, and I just wanted to check because it is important that we continue to get excellent prospects for our city like these three gentlemen. And if you say or think it's okay, one other question maybe. Did I... Public Works Department have a lot to say about this individual?
Tiger and Kim were on the recruiting committee, so I do not know the amount of say from Public Works versus HR, but I know Tiger. She's pretty tough.
Know Tiger, too.
She's very detail-oriented. She asks good questions.
Okay.
He's just giving you a hard time, Martell, but now you understand. Like I was telling you, you know, everybody else's standard is here. When Ms. Laura watches over you, your standard will be up here. It'll be a hard road to hoe, but you'll do it. I have good confidence in you. So thank you so much. Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Nash.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Congratulations to all of you. Municipal order 2019-167.
Municipal order approving the transfer of Caleb Holsey to the position of Fire Apparatus Operator in the Fire Department.
I'm moved. Second.
Motion by Paragon, second by Denning.
This is a request for a transfer for Captain Holsey from Captain to Fire Apparatus Operator. Chief Coulson has reviewed this and has accepted his request and will replace his position at a later date. And Mr. Holsey is completing all necessary recertifications to fulfill his new role as FAO, which is a driver of a truck, and asks for your approval of this request.
Comments, questions? Please call the roll.
Nash.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Municipal order 2019-168.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2019-67 for Dishman Lane Traffic Signal Improvement from Arrow Electric Company Incorporated of Louisville, Kentucky in the amount of $164,983.60.
I'm moved.
Second.
By Paragon, second by Beasley Brown. Mr. Mizel.
This was an item we discussed, I believe during budget, the need for a traffic signal at that intersection of Dishman Lane and Industrial Drive. There is a lot of heavy truck traffic there. We went out for a bid for this work and received one bid from Arrow Electric Company in the amount of $164,983. They're going to come into a mast armpole configuration, pedestrian signals with crosswalks, restriping of Dishman and Nashville Road intersection to the railroad tracks. And maybe, maybe should I say industrial, but installation of traffic signal and pedestrian signals are all included in ADA ramps, striping, traffic control, the works, all for $164,983. Greg Meredith is here, our Public Works Director, to answer any questions you may have on this project.
Comments, quick.
I have one question. I have attempted to run on Industrial Drive, and it's not a good idea. So I don't remember there being sidewalks. Is there sidewalks on Dishman, and that's where we have the ADA?
There's a sidewalk on a portion of Dishman. I think maybe even on both sides there. So there is sidewalk on Dishman. I'm pretty sure.
But am I correct in that there's none on Industrial?
There's none on Industrial right now. That is correct.
Comments? Please call the roll.
Nash.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes, municipal order 2019.
Municipal order approving fiscal years 2019, 2020 through 2022, 2023 Capital Improvement Program for the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky.
I'm moved.
Second.
Paragon, second by Beasley Brown. Mr. Mizel.
This document is something we do annually to present to you kind of what we have reviewed and looked at that could be coming up in the next couple of years. It's kind of a recommended practice as well with Government Finance, Governmental Finance Officers of America as a recommend, just a recommended practice to do on an annual basis to get, to stay on top of your capital needs. Katie's worked on this. Everything that's proposed will be reevaluated within that upcoming budget year. So what you see, say, in 2022 would be reevaluated for the '22 budget. So this is nothing that's set in stone. You're not approving a multi-three-year budget or anything like that for capital. But this is something, a document that Katie and her staff put together. We do this every year to just give, get a future outlook on what our capital needs are going to be. And Katie's here. Add any commentary or answer any questions on this document.
Questions?
Katie, do you have anything to add?
I have a few questions. Brent, can I ask you a couple of questions on some of the lists that you have? I'm on the first tab of our CIP all year, and then it's the back of the first page where we have our Parks and Rec recommendations. And there's a couple of things here that piqued my interest. There's a Pasco Boulevard Park Development, Hillview Mills Park Land Acquisition. So I'm just curious if, you know, that is something that we have in our parks plan in terms of purchasing new land for parks in the future and how close we are to possibly doing that.
The master plan, it does mention about service radius of city residents and trying to do a, reach some of those residents and maybe on the former outskirts of the city that are now probably in the middle of the city, I guess, as we have grown. Pasco is representative of the fact of a highly condensed area of the city. And as far as Parks and Recreation Services go, few opportunities in that area. If we have, that is a first step, if you will, because a park's design would be real creative. We'd love to get to that point and love to do some great things there. Land is limited in that area, so a lot of different landowners. So that is strictly about opportunities to approach different landowners and possibly try to work with those in the neighborhood to see if we can create a recreational opportunity, a playground, some sort of play opportunities for that neighborhood.
Well, I would love to see that. I know that neighborhood has a ton of kids, and right now they really don't have a safe place to play and are, but there are a ton of kids making away in the street, however they can get together. So I would love for us to prioritize that if we can sooner rather than later to see if we can get families in that neighborhood a safe place for their kids to play and out of the streets.
As this is a parks thing, a parks request, I guess, it is a, I think, neighborhood community services and parks agree in your assessment as well. So, yeah, it's kind of a tandem, if you will, as far as seeing the need and just trying to create an opportunity.
I just want to, it's on our agenda. I want to make sure you all know that this is something that, as a city commissioner, and if any other commissioners also find that favorable, I'd love to see us do that. Thanks.
Comments, your questions?
One. Hey, Brent, I noticed here rolling bland shelter and bathroom upgrades. Where are the bathrooms now?
They're staying in the same location. We feel like we can do a better job, serve the public better, and I wouldn't say upscale, but improve the abilities of the bathroom there now. The shelter is, and the restrooms are, if I can be honest, probably below par in what we would like, how we'd like to serve our residents. And we feel like we can, with a little remodeling, we can, not increasing anything, just do a, simply a remodel of those two things.
I read that, right? That's two years off, correct?
I think those are both listed for 2021, so that'd be next fiscal year. Yeah.
Comments? Please call the roll.
Nash.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes, municipal order 2019-170.
Municipal order approving the construction of a leachate collection forced main system at the Butler County landfill and approving and authorizing the execution of a memorandum of agreement with the Commonwealth of Kentucky Energy and Environmental Cabinet, Division of Wastewater Management, to provide up to $450,000 to reimburse the City of Bowling Green for the cost of the leachate collection system.
I'm moved.
Second. Paragon, second by Nash.
Been looking for a permanent solution to the leachate disposal at Butler County landfill for some time. Matt Powell has been working on this with InSafe. We did a similar thing at Glen Lilly where we did a memorandum of agreement where we did the work and the state reimbursed us for that work. We have an opportunity now, in June of this year, the state has advised Matt that they have some encumbered funds, but then came back and said, well, we've only really got enough for the part of the project, and that's the forced main component, which gets it into the sewer, if I understand it correctly. But this is a memorandum of agreement for the completion of that work, and we would file for reimbursement as, to get that work done. We would continue the design work and deliver a completed design with InSafe wood, and then present a memorandum of agreement and get the money from the state. And the recommendation is that we approve this memorandum of agreement in the amount of $450,000. And like I said, this only gets us to a certain point. It doesn't complete the whole project. But it gets us a good ways toward the end result that we want. So before you, is this contract with the state for $450,000. Matt is here and can answer any questions you have on this project. Hopefully, I got most of the basics correct, but Matt is here if you have any questions.
Comments, your questions?
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
What is the estimated timeline, you think, to complete this part of the project once?
Part of the project, I'll be done next summer.
Okay.
Yeah, this one will move quickly.
Okay. That was it. Thank you.
Anything else?
Nash.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG 2019-43.
Ordinance amending zoning ordinance. Ordinance amending Articles 1, 3, 4, and 5 of the zoning ordinance of the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, as recommended by the City-City Planning Commission.
So moved. Second.
By Paragon, second.
Our revisions, cleanup items that have been presented to you all from planning and zoning. There is a nice summary that Ben has provided in the first couple pages of your packets involving what articles were affected and revised. So I think everything is in your packets. It's just a matter of whether or not you have any questions on these changes to, looks like Article 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8. And then there's on a, no, actually, there's no changes proposed, it's 6, 7, 8, and no changes to appendixes A and B. And I'm sorry, Article 2 has no changes, but Ben is here to answer any questions you may have on these revisions.
Questions?
I can't say I read this whole thing word for word, so I'm sure you have.
Call the roll.
Nash.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes, first reading of ordinance BG 2019-44.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning a portion of two tracts of land containing 1.053 acre from RS 1A Single-Family Residential to RS 1D Single-Family Residential located at 2929 Small House Road, presently owned by James and Sally Brown.
I'm moved.
Second.
Second.
Paragon, second by Nash. It's a first, or first reading of a unanimous recommendation from planning and zoning for rezoning. Any comments or questions?
One.
Yes, sir.
Ben, what is the difference between RS 1A and RS 1D?
Basically, the amount of land you would be able to cover in a development. So for example, your maximum lot coverage in RS 1A is 50% of the lot. RS 1D, I believe, is 70 or 75% of the lot.
Meaning that 70% of the land could be covered as a result of this change?
Impervious surface, yes. So basically, it allows a little more density, a little smaller lots.
Else? Please call the roll.
Nash.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes, municipal order 2019-171.
Municipal order authorizing submission of applications to the Kentucky Department of Criminal Justice Training, the Kentucky Law Enforcement Council, to establish and operate a police officer basic training academy and telecommunicator basic academy, and further take all necessary actions to establish the academies.
I'm moved.
Paragon, second by Nash.
I think we spent quite a bit of time on this at our retreat, and you all know kind of the basics and the information that was presented, that we do have an opportunity to apply, to have our basic training academy here in Bowling Green for our Bowling Green Police Department. And police staff have worked a lot of hours on this and put a lot of things together and still working on it with the state. And so I'm going to just leave it to you guys. Everything is in your packet. We presented to you at the retreat. We do have Chief Hawkins and Deputy Chief Bowles here to answer any further questions on this item. But we recommend support for this, being able to establish our own police academy here in Bowling Green.
Comments, your questions?
Yes. Does this request stop with the Department of Justice, or will it have to go before the Kentucky legislation for our department to be set up? In other words, first step, Department of Justice. Are there any other steps?
There's three or four critical steps between now and the time it would, we would actually establish an academy. The first step is to actually apply for permission to move forward in that process. That is through the Kentucky Law Enforcement Council. They're the overarching overseer of all law enforcement training in the state of Kentucky. So they would have to approve our application to move forward with the academy. Once we get that first step taken care of, then they would come and inspect our facilities to make sure we had the ability to actually host that type of training adequately, which we're confident that we do. If we get approval for our facilities, then we have to go back to the Kentucky Law Enforcement Council to have curriculum for the 20-week academy approved. Once we get that established, those three steps, if we can get Kentucky Law Enforcement Council support for all three of those steps, then we will be able to establish our own basic academy. So it's all done through the Kentucky Law Enforcement Council. Now, there are other entities that we would like to have the support of as a, as a part of that process, but it's all overseen and approved by the Kentucky Law Enforcement Council, which we call the KLEC.
Are we going to have dormitories available in case we have individuals in our academy from other communities, other cities?
We have no intention of hosting any other agency besides our own. This is only to meet our own needs.
No, I understand that, but individual, let's say we have an individual that lives down to Goodlands Field. We're a little distant, a little longer somewhere. And that individual fits into the category we have with some of ours, driving back and forth, well, driving a long distance. How are we going to accommodate that individual?
If they plan on keeping that as their permanent residence, I don't think we would provide housing for them at all. You know, they obviously have the choice of living wherever they would want to live, but we don't have any plans, nor do we feel like it's necessary to house anyone. Now, if we've hired somebody from a great distance away, we have practiced putting them up in a hotel for about two weeks to give them time to make arrangements for their own housing here in Bowling Green. But that's a, that's really a short-term measure to give them the time they need to find their own housing. But our academy, we don't feel the need to have housing. We're not going to feed our recruits. We're not going to house our recruits. It's going to be like any other employee coming to work. They're going to live where they're going to live, and they're going to have to drive to work every day, just like I do and every other member of the agency.
Follow-up question.
Ma'am.
I really appreciated the presentation you all did at our retreat, but there weren't any members of the public there. So if you all could just get a little bit of overview of why we're doing this and some of the problems that it'll help solve and why it's good for our city to bring our training home.
Absolutely, and thank you for that opportunity. The, the, one of the challenges with law enforcement across the state, not just the Bowling Green Police Department, but all police agencies across the state is there is an extensive training period. So for example, our hiring process for any group of police officers, new police officers, is roughly five to six months. So you have a five to six-month lead time just in the hiring process. Then, once we make a job offer, there is a very, a varied delay in how long it takes us to get those officers then scheduled for the basic academy. That can range from four to six weeks, up to as long as we've experienced 18-week delays to get officers just into basic academy after we hire them. And so the quick math will tell you that 18 weeks is over four months that we are doing some preliminary training, but that time would be better spent going ahead and getting them involved in a basic training environment. And so if we are waiting 18 weeks to get them into a 20-week training program, you can see that we could better utilize that 18 weeks and nearly complete the basic academy in the same time we're waiting just to get them into the academy in some cases. There's a long history through three different, three different directors of the Department of Criminal Justice Training Academy that, that, and we understand it's very difficult when you work with hundreds of agencies across the state. And an agency of our size, we're the largest agency who sends currently our recruits to the academy. And so we create the greatest demand in terms of the basic academy classes. And so they can't... demand in terms of the basic academy classes. And so they can't give us special treatment in terms of getting us into the academy quickly, which, which is certainly what we would like to see, but we understand why they can't and why they don't. So it results in these very long delays in some cases. And so we both have the resources internally with our training staff and some, some of our folks who have a lot of skills in that training environment, to be able to establish our own academy, to teach the curriculum that's approved by the Kentucky Law Enforcement Council, and to do that in a really timely and efficient manner, and, and in, and in what has become not an unusual wait time to get them into the academy, we could have them almost trained in that basic academy environment and then put them into field training. So it becomes a much more efficient process for us in terms of how quickly we can get them trained, get them into field training, and then out on the street as police officers. And so the, the, the shorter we can condense all of their training, waiting, and training time, it just makes a more efficient process that allows us to get officers out on the street quicker, puts them to work quicker, serving our community.
Isn't that a pretty good recruiting tool for you, that they don't have to leave their families for weeks on end for training in another community?
I think it would be an excellent recruiting tool. If I were a young police officer, if you, you know, go back 30 years and, and put myself in their shoes, I would go, so let me understand this. I can sleep in my own bed. I can sleep in my own bed. I can take care of my own personal business while at the same time go through this basic academy that is hosted locally. I think that becomes really, really attractive to prospective future employees, that they don't have to travel to Richmond, be gone all week for 20-plus weeks in a row. Yeah, I think that becomes really an attractive recruiting tool.
Come answer questions. If he can't, and he gets his age and he can't hear, that's his problem. Please call the roll.
Ash.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Thanks, Doug.
Good move, Doug.
Appreciate it. Thank you all.
Second reading of ordinance BG 201940.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning attractive land containing 0.2397 acre from RM3 Townhouse Multi-Family Residential to GB General Business located at Zero Whispering Hills and Russellville Road, presently owned by Elite Properties LLC, Kirav Allah Talis.
So moved.
Prepared some discussion. You wanna go first, Lynn?
Yeah. So I have, I consulted with our attorney, well, I consulted with our clerk who consulted with our attorney, and I don't want to introduce new evidence, but I believe as part of my deliberating process, not I believe, as part of my deliberation process, I've visited the site. I've visited the site before the last hearing, and I've visited the site today. And I have, I have some cute pictures. There's one really bad one in there. That one, that one in particular, that, that I wanted to share related to the zoning. I do apologize for the second picture. I used myself as, as a reference point, which, which is a large reference point. So what I want to begin with is, on, on the first picture, this picture was taken at approximately 11:41 a.m. I'm standing at the very, this picture is taken standing at the very edge of the lot as it faces Russellville Road, which is exactly where the driveway for the pharmacy would be located. At 11:41 a.m. on a Tuesday, traffic was backed up beyond where the entrance to the pharmacy would be, just at 11:41. Not 7:45, not 5:45 or 5:30. It, it, it peak hours at just 11:41 a.m. on a Monday. So I am, I am opposed to this zoning, as I voted last time, and I'm opposed because it's non-compliant. One of the ways that I believe that it is non-compliant is because there is too much traffic that exists on these roads in order to safely accommodate the amount of traffic that would be generated by a commercial business as opposed to a residence. If you go to the second picture, again, I apologize for using myself as the reference point, I am standing approximately 10 feet from the property line. If you notice, while I was there, a guy came and mowed the lawn, or was mowing the lot. And so you can kind of see in the picture the, the yellow discolored kind of straight stripe that runs left to right or right to left off the page. The, that shows you where the property line is, and the building is going to be built, the corner of the building is going to be built right where I'm standing. I think sometimes we look at, at least I do, I won't, I won't accuse anybody else of doing it, but sometimes I look at planning and zoning documents and I hear 30 feet, and I hear 100 feet, and I hear 10 feet, and in my mind, I kind of imagine what that looks like. But until you go stand someplace and recognize how close that is. So what that means is, with that 10 feet there to that property line, that house sits seven and a half feet from their property line. So we have a private residence that's going to be 17 and a half feet from the corner of a commercial business. It's a rhetorical question, but, because I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but I would ask, who would want to live 17 and a half feet from a commercial business? I, I don't think many people. There was discussion at the last hearing, at the last meeting, about the sale of that particular property. I looked back in the minutes. It was okay to be discussed. The sale of that particular property, and the vote seemed to maybe hinge on whether or not the, the gentleman, who I have no disrespect for, that, that is, that is trying to build the pharmacy, I, I, I want him to be successful, so this is not a personal thing, but the vote seemed to hinge on whether or not he attempted to purchase the property, and whether or not the gentleman that was standing at the podium was the person who was selling the property. As I understand it, the person standing at the podium is the renter of the property, not the owner of the property, and he learned that his landlord was trying to sell the home that he's living in at the meeting. So if there was some thought that the gentleman who lives in the house was trying to play both sides of the argument, he was not. He lives in the house. He wants to continue living in the house. He does not own the house, and he was not trying to sell the house. The, the company that owns the house, which from the PV records indicates is BG Rental Properties LLC, they may be trying to sell the house. But that gentleman who stood before us is not that individual. So again, 17 and a half feet. If you, if you stand, if you go to the third picture, I am again standing right where the driveway to the pharmacy would be, looking back towards the intersection of Russellville Road. And I want you, the, the picture really doesn't do it justice, but it's all that I had about just how close that intersection is to the intersection of Russellville Road. I mean, having, and, and I want to be on record, having lived in Russ, in Whispering Hills for approximately 10 years, about 10 years ago, I can appreciate the difficulty of getting out of Whispering Hills. And in fact, members of Whispering Hills at the time, not a neighborhood association, by best I can tell, just a group, demanded help from the city because we were unable to get out of Whispering Hills Boulevard onto Russellville Road. Eventually, there were some improvements that were made, and there was, is it Tomlinson? What's the water park sit on? Tomlinson? That allowed some traffic to go out the back of the neighborhood. So, but what we're talking about here is increasing the congestion within 100 feet? Greg, do you know? About 100 feet? Okay. I walked it off at one point, so we'll take it at 100 feet. We're talking about increasing the congestion in an already congested area by putting an additional turn across. I mean, so it would be one thing if all the traffic turning into the pharmacy was coming from town and heading out and was simply gonna make a right turn into the pharmacy. But they're not. People are gonna cross over. People are gonna cross over what's essentially going to be two lanes of traffic that's already congested to get into the pharmacy, in an already congested area. I'd love for you to ask questions, Commissioner Denning.
The corner of Whispering Hills.
Yep.
To the first line of the driveway is what?
25, 28 feet, I'm guessing, there. I can tell you from where I'm standing to the intersection is 100 feet.
To Whispering Hill?
No, from where I'm standing.
Yes.
To that light.
Okay. I wanna know what the distance is from here, the edge of Whispering Hills, to the first line driveway going into that particular.
Ben, can you look at the document, and is there a measurement on there? You, you read them better than I do.
Find one that is to scale.
While he's looking, may I go on?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Nope, no, don't be sorry. The fourth picture is me standing on Whispering Hills Boulevard looking at the, the lot. And I'm standing where the driveway will come out onto Whispering Hills Boulevard. The two red lines I've added, I chased down, you can see the guy in the mower on the left-hand side. I chased him down and found out that his mower deck is 61 inches wide. Having a mowing business, I can tell you that then it's gonna be slightly larger than 61 inches is the way that they're mo, is the way that they're measured. So if you take 61 inches wide, that's approximately five feet. Again, to give you a reference of what five feet actually looks like on the ground. So that's only five feet. It would be double that, but it would still only be double that. There is a fence that you cannot see if you continued to follow the right-hand line, red line, all the way to the back, that is a chain-link fence.
Like where the bushes are?
Where the bushes are. Will you remind me of your name, sir? I don't want to mispronounce your name. Al? Okay. He has graciously agreed to build a 10-foot-high wooden fence, but if, eight, I'm sorry, thank you, an eight-foot-high wooden fence. But given that the house was built at a time when the planning and zoning rules are different, the chain-link fence currently sits right on the property line. So I don't even know, unless there's an agreement with BG Rentals to tear down that fence, how an eight-foot wooden fence would even be built. You may already have secured that. I, I don't know. You then, in my opinion, add to that that this is a two-story structure. No? Thank you. One story, up to 20 feet tall. The peak of the house next to it would be approximately how high? Okay. So we're talking about a structure that's going five feet higher? I, I just think that this lot, and, and what I've shared here is more evidence that this lot was designed to be a residential lot. Whether it will be a residential lot in the future, I have no idea. I don't know. But I don't think that the justification of, well, it may never be anything, is a good enough reason to allow it to be anything. And in this case, that anything would be a commercial pharmacy that's going to create more congestion, congestion in a congested area. It's going to feed traffic out onto a neighborhood road that, again, can only turn, I recognize, can only legally turn right to get to Russellville Road. Again, having lived in Whispering Hills subdivision, I remember when Mr. Neal put up the T-posts in order to keep traffic from going across, because I joined him one day in doing so, which has always been a problem. And now you have people who are going to be sitting in the pharmacy potentially, if this were approved, and they're going to be looking to drive out of the pharmacy on Whispering Hills Boulevard, and they're gonna look to their right, and they're gonna see, at 5:12 p.m., 46 cars is what I counted on September 26th that I went out there. 46 cars from the light, all the way back. And they're gonna look, and they're gonna see 46 cars, and then they're gonna look forward, and they're gonna see Whispering Hills Boulevard's grassy patch. Who you think, which direction do you think they're gonna go? They're gonna cut right across that grassy patch. If, and I'm not saying every one of them will, but odds are, some of them are going to. And they're going to do that because we're creating that environment. Not only will they be breaking the law, but we're creating the environment that would allow them, that would encourage them to say, I can sit over here and wait for 46 cars, or I could just shoot right across this little grassy area and take a left, fly down Whispering Hills Boulevard. I lived on Whispering Hills Boulevard. They get it down Whispering Hills Boulevard until they can work their way back to Tomlinson, back out onto, to, to, or to Veterans Memorial, and, and off they go. I recognize that we appoint people to planning and zoning to make decisions for us. I also recognize that our levels of, our government has levels of government, and things are approved at one stage, and they're passed along to another stage. And simply because one stage says yes, is, does not mean that another stage has to say yes. That's called a rubber stamp. I don't want to be involved in a rubber stamp. Planning and zoning hears lots of information, and they make decisions. The city commission is also entitled to hear that information and make a different decision. And I am stating that my vote will be no for this, and I hope based upon this information, my commissioners will join me in a no vote. I yield the floor.
Ben? I'm gonna ask you something, please. If I, as a builder, bought that lot, and I wanted to put an apartment complex on that lot, tell me what size apartment I can put on that lot, and roughly, how many parking spaces I can have?
So, so the lot is currently zoned is RM3, and that would, based on the lot size, you would be allowed to get two units on that. Now, that's the number of units. Then the parking would be determined based on the number of bedrooms. So if you, if you had two two-bedroom units, for example, you'd probably think you'd be required to have somewhere in the realm of five or six parking spaces.
And where in this example would the ingress and egress be on the property? Or where could it be, I should say?
Well, that would be determined, as this one was, in the same way, by either the Public Works Department for the city of Bowling Green on Whispering Hills Boulevard, or Kentucky Transportation Cabinet on Russellville Road. or Kentucky Transportation Cabinet on Russville Road. And I do, the answer to the previous question of how far the driveway is on Whispering Hills Boulevard to the intersection of Russville Road, that's approximately sixty feet.
Mayor, thank you.
Comments or questions?
So I have had asked Greg Meredith, our Public Works Department Director, who was previously with the State of Kentucky in transportation, highways, streets. What was your title?
District Engineer.
District Engineer. To go over and take a look, because I've been over there three or four times myself, just in the last week, or two weeks since we've met. It's, it's a problem getting onto Russville Road. It is a serious problem getting onto Russville Road. But what I would like to see is for us to problem-solve the exit that we have existing over in Whispering Hills. And I've asked our director to go over and meet, we want to meet with the neighbors, as many as possible. Had a long conversation with Mr. Sid Baker this morning, Mr. Williams, to try to, let's try to solve the problem. I'm not sure that it can completely be solved, but I'm sure that there is some improvements that we can make to the exit of Whispering Hills onto Russville Road. For example, there's no striping anywhere. So if I'm leaving, and I'm, I want to get out, and I want to turn left, but I'm taking up too much space, somebody behind me has to wait until I have an opportunity to turn left. If they want to turn right, they can't. There's plenty of room to have a turning lane going on to the right, a turning lane to go on to the left. And maybe, Greg, could you speak to what you saw?
Sure. We went out and looked at it as well last week. And so we, we think there's enough room if we go in and do some restriping back to the edge of the property line. And that's the, the property in question here. You know, it's about seventy-five feet of storage we think we can get. And so, again, that's from the, where the stop bar would be near the sidewalk on Russville Road, back into the neighborhood on the exit lanes. So we think we can make that one lane turning right and one lane turning left, which will at least, it won't give any more capacity. It won't help people get out onto Russville Road when traffic's backed up. But it will at least keep people in their lanes if they want to try to make a left or a right turn movement. You know, a lot of what I've heard is everybody wants to turn right. That would give them, hopefully, the ability to make the right turn lane, even though the folks wanting to turn left would have to wait for a gap.
So how many car lengths is seventy-five feet?
You know, it's approximately four, three to four car lengths.
So you could have three and four cars queued up. If they're going right, they can go on, because that's going to be an easier turn than a left turn, obviously. Because you got to go over two, two lanes into the middle. There is a middle lane that you can get into. And then you got to kind of work your way in. But, but I feel like getting an engineer's eyes on this. Just, you know, I, I've worked at Nicely Center for years. I live on Highland Way. It's a similar situation. It is dangerous, and it is frustrating to be turning left and somebody is stuck in the middle and isn't willing to go. I mean, it's a very frustrating situation. But I personally would like for us to look. Whether the pharmacy passes or not, I think what this neighborhood has accomplished is building some, some greater awareness as to the issue that you're having at peak points getting out of your neighborhood. So that's all I wanted to say.
Again, you're welcome to make a comment if you want, but you have to stick to the script that you had last time, too. Okay?
Can I discuss what was mentioned?
Yeah, come on up.
Thank you so much, again, for the opportunity, for the time last time and this time. I want to discuss four quick points that was mentioned today by Mr. Nash. First of all, about the company, the BG Reynolds. So when I first approached to buy that lot, I actually talked to the owner of the, of the property, Mr. Mike Coffey. And basically, he said, give me a couple of weeks. And then I talked to the guy that lives there. And if he agrees, we'll proceed. I said, that's fine. And this is what we did. And I'm sorry to say this, but the information you mentioned is not accurate, that it was done behind his back? No. I have text, and I have a contract already signed, and we're closing next week. And it was with the agreement of the tenant. And I actually offered him, I said, you can stay, you know, you don't need to move. So he said, well, I like, I like to stay. I said, well, it's, it's your house. Just consider it as, as your house. You stay for as long as you want. So this was not, of course, I would not accept, you know, to myself to do any, anything like this to anybody, like whether there's a project or not. My values, you know, will not allow me to do this. Plus, the fence part, part because it's my own property now, and to make it looks nice. It's, they're going to be, instead of the, the fence right now, that's where the fence, the new fence will be. So it's, it's going to be, basically, that will replace it, and it would be on the, on the property line.
Do you own that property now?
Yes.
You own the house that's behind it now?
Yes. Already has been arranged. I told, everything was finalized. Today is what, Tuesday? Last Monday. Last Monday, everything was finalized. And that's what I tried to mention last time, but because Your Honor requested not to mention new information. So I was holding not, you know, like to talk new stuff until I felt like there's a necessity like today to mention it, okay? So I want you all to be sure, like, this was, was done with the agreement. And by the way, even the roof has been replaced. And just to show you how much the tenant is involved, we had him actually open the claim to replace the roof because of the hail. So if he was not involved and noticed, you know, had information about this, he would not like be involved in even, even like the whole process. Okay? This is number one. Number two, the, the traffic. You went today. There's no pharmacy, right?
No pharmacy.
Exactly. So the problem already exists. Like, it's, it's not something my, my approach business will create. The problem is, is already, and it exists on Scottsville Road. It exists on Campbell Lane. It's, it's everywhere. It's because of two things. First of all, the time that you mentioned, like the traffic, the time of the year, we have schools. We have like the Western, we have all that. Plus, the city is growing. We have, we serve a lot of surrounding communities. And one of the points why I selected Russville Road is to serve the surrounding of Bowling Green. And there's a lot of growth in that area. And one of them is actually my beloved neighbors is, I'll be able to, to help. It's just like the project that was just done with the, with the Sheldon's Pharmacy down Nashville Road. It's right out at a, you know, neighborhood. And everyone, like, who, who wants to have a bar at the entrance of his house? Nobody. Who wants to have something that can help? Especially, and I don't mean anything, we have a lot of elderly, you know, like, community living there. These are my first target, is those people. And I'm not saying just to say it. I mean, my record proves this, that I've always helped those people. So the traffic already exists. When it comes to my business and the influence on that, all the recommendations and the requests from the State Department of Transportation, Mr. Joe, Mr. Sarah Payton, I worked with them. Even, I don't remember, there was somebody with the, with the city, I guess.
Mark Atcher.
Right?
Mark Atcher.
Mark Atcher, yes. He had, he had the input into that. To secure and make sure we're not creating any problem. It's, all the measures have been done. And one of them that I mentioned is putting the curb in, on my property is not to add, you know, any, any more problem. Plus, my property is at the very far end of the neighborhood. So I will not bring any traffic into the neighborhood, because there's no way for them to come into my, my business from Whispering Hills. Even the residents of the neighborhood, they're not allowed to enter the property from that, from that point. So all the measurements have been done. And, and the way it's proposed, the, the two lanes in from Russville Road is actually, it's just like having a bigger vein to keep that flow. So you don't create any congestion that affect the traffic. Yes, if you stand, you will see sixty-four cars. But if somebody, somebody coming from this way, even if your traffic goes all the way to the 165, to the, to the parkway, that's going to, not going to affect. If somebody is coming from that way, trying to get in, it's basically they have to wait until they reach that point. If somebody is leaving, it's just like anywhere else. It's part of our responsibility is to make sure, you know, it's safe in, in the past. I cannot like go into every single human being and tell them, hey, because there's a pharmacy here, you're supposed to act like this. The right has to be done, whatever it is, whenever it is. And I've done everything, everything right and recommended by our professionals, by our people that have all the experience, and even by all the people that I owe all the respect to. We've had a long conversation, mainly yesterday. We had maybe, I don't know, talked about two hours. My wife was not happy, like, being in the neighborhood, talking to them. I said, it's part of my responsibility, is to listen and to act. It's not just, you know, listen and just let it go from the other ear. No. I listened, and I took every single measurement and precaution and action. And I guaranteed it, this is a public hearing. And it's, I took every single action that guarantees the safety of the neighbors. And anything that I can do, even any meeting in the future with the neighbors, I mean, I'm ready to do anything that helps, because I'll be living there, right? I think there's an old say, it says, we, we pick our friends, we make our friends, we pick our enemies, but God makes our neighbors. So these are my neighbors. And anything that concerned them, it would concern me. I'm not just saying this to say a patory or anything. I took actions to prove my, my attention and intention to, to help them with, with the traffic, with serving them, and with anything that I can do with the ordinance of the city, the regulations, and all the authorities that we have in the city. So I really wish, and I hope that you, you have to proceed with this. I explained before why I proceeded, why I selected that location. It's been, I think this is the, you know, our last hearing. It's been a long journey. Like, I've learned through the process, met amazing people from neighbors, from people that works for the city and for the county and everything. And I were expecting two twin, like, twin girls. So my son is actually, keeps asking me every day, hey, Dad, where, where are we going to open the pharmacy? So he wanted actually to be here today. But I said, look, like, I don't, I don't, you know, it's, it's more than what he can process. I know he's emotional, so I was afraid he's going to, you know, be here and cry and feel like his dad is facing, you know, like he's in court. So I want to thank you, everyone. And please, if you have any question, like, I'm, I'm ready to answer. I wanted to explain the map. I guess everyone has, has the map. The way, as I said, it is designed is, is to keep that flow, not to create any, any other problem. So really, what, what I'm proposing here, and here's the thing. We could have decided, you know what? We're going to do just one. And that was, by the way, offered, like, was an option, full, full access from Russville Road, in and out. But I think they had to do a study and see what the traffic would be. And it was no. That will, could have created congestion. I've looked in town, and I don't want to mention like business names, where they actually, they're on the corner. They don't have access to the main road. It's just through the subdivisions. That's a problem. If I will have my customers use the entrance of the neighborhood to come to my business, that would be a problem, yes. If I have full access in and out, if you're leaving, you have to watch somebody leaving from that road, from my lot, and somebody coming from here, yes. But with this scenario that was designed and suggested by all the professional people that we worked with, this is the safest way and the, the only way to make sure this is not going to affect. I told them landscaping, Whispering Hills is a nice neighborhood. And anything, and I, last time I suggested, you know, or somebody suggested that maybe you can do like bushes or anything. It's going to add a value for the neighborhood. Not money-wise, like, you know, market goes up and down. It's going to add value for the people living there. What do you want to be next door to you? Do you want it to be an apartment? Do you want it to be a restaurant? Or you want it to be a pharmacy? Somebody professional there that really cares for you? So I, I really ask for your vote tonight to approve this and to add another star to our lovely city and have another success story here.
Comments or questions?
So a person living in the subdivision, they've got to come back out on veterans to get to your drugstore then, right?
Basically, if they want to go to the, to the lot, they have to go, just like any other person. They have to be from Russville Road and enter the, the lot. This is to protect them and not to make it hard for them to use my pharmacy. If I could have used, make it another entrance, yes. Like, you know, I'll be more than happy. But since this is a concern, and it's a safety matter, no. It's, it's just only right turn. And I think they allowed one sign, right, Ben? They said yes. With one, with sign that says, right only. So all the measurements have been considered and plotted on the plans. And I don't know usually how the process is, but I'm sure there's going to be audit, and people looking and making sure everything in the application is actually executed.
Anything else?
Please call the roll.
Ash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
No.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Second reading of ordinance BG 201941.
Ordinance closing public rights of way. Ordinance approving the closing of a portion of an unapproved right-of-way bounded by Park Street, High Street, Cabell Drive, and East Fourteenth Avenue, and further closing an unapproved right-of-way on a portion of East Fifteenth Avenue off High Street.
I'll move.
Second?
Paragon, second by Nash. Second reading of a right-of-way that's actually now a parking lot for Western. Any comments or questions?
A nice parking lot. And they didn't waste no time in building it. You can do wonders with a D8 boom, don't you?
Call the roll.
Ash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Second reading of ordinance BG 201942.
Ordinance granting franchise related to telecommunications system. Ordinance granting a non-exclusive telecommunications or related non-cable franchise to Windstream Kentucky East LLC for the use of rights-of-way for the operation and maintenance of telecommunications or non-cable system within the city of Bowling Green, Kentucky.
I'll move.
Second?
Bushman, Paragon, second by Denning. Again, the second reading of a non-cable communications franchise.
But, but if anyone wants to talk to them about the possibility of a cable system, we wish they would.
Absolutely.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Ash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?